We're on now. Welcome, everybody, to the August 26th Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from this planning commission on items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting on September 3rd, 2019, at 10:30 in the morning. The Planning Commission does utilize speaker request forms, which are available in the back of the room. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker request form. With that being said, it appears that we're all here in attendance for the roll call. Getting started on item number one, approval of the August 12th, 2019 minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or amendments to the minutes? If none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's agenda, we have items three through...I'm getting there, 26th. Are there any changes to the agenda? If none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda. Go ahead, PJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. We have quite a few of them here today. Item three, conditional use permit review 0101 for Ursula Brackett to review a mobile home park in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 0101 to no later than October 28th, 2019, Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to meet with the landowner. Item four, conditional use permit review 1514 for Daryl and Mary Harkin to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1514 to the September 23rd, 2019 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant time to obtain a building permit for the existing double-wide mobile home. Item five, conditional use permit review 1516 for Nick Hobart to review a guest house on a subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends the approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1516 with four conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1731 for Jack Anderson to review a double-wide mobile home to be used as a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1731 with seven conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1829 for Denny and Leah Henrickson to review living in an existing shop building while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the conditional use permit 1829 to no later than the November 12th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1833 for Fatter Boys Incorporated, Bob Fuchs is the agent, to review three internally illuminated signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1833 with five conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1843 for Board of State's Paving to review a temporary asphalt batch plant and contractor storage area on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1843 to the September 9th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting with 14 conditions. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1907 for Black Hills Kart Racing LLC, David Price is the agent, to review a dirt track to be used as a dirt track kart racing, for dirt track kart racing on the subject property in the general commercial district, excuse me. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1907 to no later than September 23rd, 2019 Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to meet with the agent on site. Item 11, plan unit development review 0105 for William Anderson, Cliff and Billy Janus, NSL Holdings LLC, to review an existing plan unit development. Staff recommends to continue the review of plan unit development 0105 to no later than the October 28th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to meet with the landowners located in the plan unit development. Item 12, minor plan unit development amendment review 1706 for Coyote Blues Vintage Bed and Breakfast to review the existing plan unit development to allow the road to be constructed with a 12-foot wide minimum surface area width and 4 inches of gravel, that a maximum of 10 bedrooms be utilized in the bed and breakfast establishment with a maximum occupancy of 24 persons at any one time, and to remove condition number 13, and that the specific uses of this plan unit development be for resort development consisting of 10 bedrooms and breakfast, for 10-bedroom bed and breakfast and residential development not exceeding one residence per 10 acres. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 1706 with 11 conditions. Item 13, construction permit review 1801 for RCS Construction Incorporated to review the installation of a 33-inch trunk sanitary sewer line from South Side Drive north along Reservoir Road. Staff recommends to end construction permit, or staff will be recommending to end construction permit 1801. Item 14, construction permit review 1809 for Dawn and Karen Weber to review placing fill and level in an area for an existing project. Staff will be recommending to end construction permit 1809. Item 15, construction permit 1903 for Site Work Specialists Incorporated to review the construction of a gravelled access road to and onto the subject property to include a minimal tree removal, grading, gravel, seeding, and culverts, and to add a common utility transfer power and communication. Staff will be recommending the extension of construction permit 1902 with 12 conditions. No, nothing further, sir.
Okay. Are there any items that staff would like pulled?
Staff would like to pull 13, 14, and 15, please.
Are there any items from the consent agenda that the membership would like pulled?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like item 12 pulled.
Okay. Any others?
That's yours.
Are there any items from the consent agenda that any of the audience members would like pulled from the agenda? And I guess I'd like to clarify the speaker request form. It looks like it says agenda items 5 through 15 and 21. Is that my understanding? Or is this only from Lloyd Soul? Sir, are you in the...
Just if I have to, there's a response that's needed right now. Just one minute.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, so that leaves consent to items 3 through 11, and 12 through 15 will be removed from the consent agenda and heard separately. Is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the items? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to item 12.
And I just want to go on record as saying I have extreme bias on this issue. You would like to refrain from voting.
Recuse yourself.
Thank you.
No other issues or comments with regards to the item, though?
I just can't comment on that.
Okay. Noted.
And with that, staff would recommend approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 1706 with 11 conditions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve item 12, PU 17-06. Approval of the extension of the Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 17-06 with 11 conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
And I just want to go on record as having abstained.
Yes. Yep. Noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into 13, 14, and 15, the reason that staff had pulled that off is because, if you notice, they're all construction permits. And the requirement for our ordinances is that they seek public comment. We didn't feel that keeping construction permits on consent was allowing the public the correct opportunity to comment, where some people would not, maybe if it's on consent, don't feel that they could comment on those items. So you won't see construction permits on the consent calendar any longer. So that's why those items were pulled today.
Thank you for the clarification. Item 13.
Good morning, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 13 is construction permit review 1801. It's to review the installation of a 33-inch trunk sanitary sewer line from South Side Drive to along North Reservoir Road. It was continued from the May 28th Planning Commission meeting. The work's done. We were just waiting for the site to be revegetated to that 70% cover. It's reached that 70% cover. So staff would recommend to end construction permit 1801 as it's no longer needed.
So moved.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the issue? Kathy?
I thought we didn't approve these construction permits.
We don't.
You're just hearing them.
So...
Yeah, so do we need to vote on it?
We do not need to vote on it. No.
For clarification, it is the stormwater permit plan that seeks to engage the public as to construction permits, but under our ordinance, the planning director has authority to approve or deny those. So they're just on calendar to allow you to ask any questions and for the public to have input.
I would withdraw my motion.
Do we take a second for the motion to be withdrawn?
We don't need the motion on it.
Okay. All right. So with that being said, are there any questions on item 13, CP 18-01, from the membership? Are there any questions on item 13 from the audience members? Okay. So we'll move on to item 14.
Item 14 is construction permit review 1809. It's to review placing fill and leveling an area for an existing project, the applicants for Dawn and Karen Weber. This one, the work's also completed, and as you can see in the pictures, it's been revegetated. You couldn't even tell any dirt work was done there, so staff is recommending to end construction permit 1809.
Thank you. Any questions on item 14? Any questions from the audience on 14? Seeing none, we're moving to item 15.
Item 15 is construction permit review 1902, and it's to review the constructing of a gravelled access road to and onto the subject property to include minimum tree removal, grading, gravel, seeding, culverts, and to add common utility transfer power and communications. From what staff can tell in conversations with the applicant, the work's done for this section of the project. You'll see later that there's another construction permit to continue the road through. However, this section is done. They're just need to revegetate the site and reclaim the banks of the road so that they're vegetated and soil erosion doesn't happen, and soil gets on other people's property. So with that, staff would recommend to the planning director to approve the extension of the construction permit 1902 with 12 conditions. Also on top of that, the applicants are aware that they have their 14 days to start the reclamation process to reclaim that site.
Any questions on item number 15 from the membership? Okay. And sir, you only wanted to respond to any questions, but you don't have any, or do you want to speak to the issue?
What I could say...
Come to the podium, please, if, to speak and state your name for the record and...
My name is Lloyd Soul. I'm one of the members of the LLC that owns this subject property. And last week, the sides of the road were seeded, and then also the shredding of the mulch was spread late last week. I think they finished that Friday, so...
Thank you for the information. Any further questions on item 15? Seeing none, we will move on to item 16.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thenneson, County Planner. Agenda item 16 is conditional use permit CU 1921. The applicants are Ryan and Lon LaRas, and they're requesting conditional use permit to allow an existing three-bedroom residence to be utilized as a vacation home rental on the subject property. To start with, zoning ordinance lists five factors that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. Their house follows, they're on the screen, I'll just read the staff response. Number one, the proposed use for a single-family residence as a vacation home rental should not affect the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the use is already permitted and upon property values in the surrounding properties. Number two, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, the use should not affect normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant properties in the area. Number three, the proposed use of the existing single-family residence should not require any utilities or facilities that are not already in place. Accesses to be provided off of Danube Lane. Lastly, staff has no drainage concerns relating specifically to the applicant's request at this time. Number four, the Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section 310, requires one off-street parking space per bedroom. It appears that adequate parking is provided on the subject property. And lastly, number five, the proposed conditional use by its very nature should have limited odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and intrusive lighting. The applicants should take care so that proposed use does not create the above-listed elements in any amount that would constitute a nuisance. As it sits today, the property is zoned suburban residential district, consisting of 2.15 acres, which was replanted last month. Access is off of Danube Lane. It utilizes the Idyllwise Community Lagoon system. There's no special flood hazard on the area, and it does contain a single-family residence built in 2007. VHRs are quite common in the Idyllwise Mountain Development and are permitted in suburban residential districts with conditional use permit. The applicant has complied with all of the application and submittal requirements for a VHR. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use CU 1921 with 13 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the membership regarding this item?
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just have kind of a general question, and that is that I noticed in the conditions, there's, not just in this one, but generally, there's a limitation based on the number of bedrooms and so on for the overnight guests, but then there's also a limitation for daytime guests. Is that, how is that determined? How many daytime guests of vacation home rental can have?
It's typically twice as many as I can stay there overnight.
Is that just, I mean, a standard? I mean, I don't see it in the ordinance. So I just was curious about how that comes about. I'm not quarreling with the outcome, I just was curious about how it's developed. Is it just your standard practice, or is it in the ordinance and I'm missing it?
It is in the ordinance. It was actually, it's been in the ordinance since it started. And with the past VHR committee, they actually increased the number of allowable daytime guests.
I see. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And then my question, well, part of it is similar to that. It appears as if they're advertising, you know, 8 for nightly and 12 for daily, but yet we're approving more than they're advertising. Is that correct?
Right. So the zoning ordinance allows two per bedroom with an additional four.
All right. I was just curious. And then the Idyllwise Homeowners Association, and I know that we don't enforce covenants, but is the Idyllwise Homeowners Association notified or in favor, or at least not in a position to deny this?
Yep. And I received, I received an email from the Homeowners Association president, I guess, and he said that they are in good standing. He does not object to the use of that home as a VHR.
Thank you.
Any further questions on item 16? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 1921 with 13 conditions. Is there a motion? Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item 17.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Cassie Bostad, Assistant Planning Director. Item 17 is another conditional use permit request. This is conditional use permit 1922. This is also a request to allow an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, actually just down the road from the one that you just approved. The applicants in this case are Michael and Soraya Pellon. As this property exists today, it's also zoned suburban residential district. This property is 0.93 acres. Access is off of Swiss Drive, and it currently contains a single-family residence and detached garage. This one is also connected to the Idyllwise Mountain Lagoon system, and there is no special flood hazard area on this property. This property actually had to go through one additional step to allow it to request this conditional use permit. By her zoning ordinance, a property has to be at least one acre in size in order to allow a vacation rental and request a conditional use permit. This property is just shy of that at 0.93 acres, so they did have to go through the process of requesting a variance by the Board of Commissioners to Section 319B3 to allow this vacation rental on less than an acre. That was approved by the Board of Commissioners in June of this year, kind of with an interesting, out-of-the-ordinary motion for us. Usually variances are just approved with conditions or not. This variance was actually approved with two conditions, and it was also voted to bring the variance back to the Board of Commissioners in one year for a review. So basically, they have approval of the variance for at least a period of one year. So now they're moving forward with the conditional use permit to allow the vacation home rental. They have complied with all of the application submittal requirements, and as Jason had mentioned, there are several other vacation home rentals in the Idyllwise Mountain area. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1922 with 13 conditions. I do want to point out that staff specifically put a review date for this conditional use permit in here to coincide with the review date of the variance as well, so that those will go together.
Thank you. Are there any questions on item 17?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Cassie, I'm reading on those requirements that we requested back when we, when the Board of Commissioners allowed for this, and it says that this variance only applies for the existing single-family residence to be utilized as a vacation home rental. Was there some concern that they were going to turn the garage into more rental space, or what was the story there?
I think there's always the concern that potentially the garage could be rental space if they were to ever sell it, or potentially if they were to ever sell it and somebody were to demolish this house and put up a new house. We just wanted it to only apply to this one, not anything different. Since it's less than that acre technically doesn't meet our requirements, we just wanted it to apply to this one only.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? I have, I have one question. So they got a variance to be at .93 acres instead of the one acre, and that would be required for any time someone would want a vacation home rental on a new existing vacation home, or on a new vacation home rental moving forward if it was less than an acre, right?
Right, yes.
Is this the first one of these that's gone through like this?
This is actually the first variance that has gone through. There were two other requests in 2017 for variances to that section of the zoning ordinance that were actually denied. This one is the first one that has actually been approved.
Okay. I know that there's, I guess, just from the various things that have happened here in the past, there's been other properties up there that have bought lots, they've shifted lot lines, those types of things to get it into this, and in this instance, they're less than the requirement, and they're moving the, they're basically not a variance for My next question is, was there any objection or any, I didn't see any in here as far as some of the neighbors against this? Did you receive any sort of negative?
I did not receive anything pertinent to the conditional use permit. If I do recall correctly, there was a few objections to the variance when that went through, but I haven't received anything specific to the conditional use permit.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said there.
I haven't received any complaints or concerns relative to the conditional use permit request. When they did the variance request, if I recall correctly, I believe there was two concerns that had come in, but ultimately the variance was approved, but I haven't received anything specific to the conditional use permit.
What were the concerns?
Just the idea of allowing a vacation home rental on less than one acre.
I see. Sorry.
Okay. Any further questions?
I have one.
Jim.
I'm a little amazed that there would be this much time spent on a variance where they're that close to meeting, you know, the specified requirements. Is it, does it have something to do, I mean, the ease with which we grant variances sometimes startles me. But, so I'm a little surprised that this one seems so sensitive. Is it because of the vacation home rental element? Is that...
I think it's partly because of the vacation rental element and partly because there was that precedent before of variances being denied for that particular thing. I believe one of the variances that was denied was like .86 acres, and another one was in the .9 range as well, and one of them was up on Idyllwise. So I think that's kind of the contention. I know that there's lots of people up there right now that are consolidating lots to go over that one acre. The Pellons unfortunately are surrounded by neighbors on all sides, so they don't necessarily have that ability, whereas some of the other properties up there, they own two lots that they can consolidate, or they've been able to negotiate with a neighbor for like a vacant area of their property or something along those lines.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious.
Further questions?
Comment?
Go ahead.
Just to answer your question, the reason I voted no on this was because I did not want to set a precedence.
Oh, okay. I was hoping that might bring out your response. I didn't want to ask you.
I just don't, I don't like the thought of setting that precedence, because you fudge a little, and then you gotta, people keep asking for more.
Yeah. And that's one of the problems with variances in anything, and maybe this is good to draw a line in the sand at some point.
And in the discussion for the variance, if I can just add something, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In the discussion for the variance with the Board of Commissioners, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, there was discussion regarding them potentially working on buying that extra .7 acres from one of the neighbors or something along those lines to get to that one acre minimum. That was part of the reason for the one-year review, is they were, am I correct, Commissioners?
That's correct, and it seemed to me, if I remember looking at the surrounding plaits, that the neighbors have over that necessary one acre, so that they could actually increase the size of their lot to an acre. It's not that they just flat-out can't. No, obviously you gotta get the neighbors to cooperate.
Further questions or comments on item 17? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 1922 with 13 conditions. Is there a motion?
Also move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
Nay.
One no, right?
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 18.
Hi, good morning. Christina Proletti, Planning Department. Item 18 is rezone and comprehensive plan amendment 1912. The applicants are asking to rezone an approximately 4.60-acre lot from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District for the proposed Lot 1 of the Thorstens and Benson Ranch subdivision number two, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land years from the planned unit development sensitive to Low Density Residential District. The lot is currently zoned as suburban residential district with a total of 79... The lot is currently zoned as suburban residential district with a total of seventy-nine point three seven acres. The applicant is in the process of creating two lots out of the subject property. Lot one, I put in yellow up there, is the one we're talking about today. That will have approximately four point six acres, which will require the rezone. They had a choice of the rezone or lot size variance, so we're doing the rezone to bring it into compliance. The rezone to the low-density residential district would be in harmony with the current zoning to the north, there's quite a bit up there. Currently, there are no structures on the property and there's been no special flood hazard area study yet to date. Staff routed this through the interdepartmental review and there are no other items of concern for this property. Staff recommends approval of rezone and comprehensive plan amendment nineteen twelve.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions on item eighteen?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Is the, is there an approach, an existing approach off of Nemo Road to the property?
I don't believe there is an approach, an approved approach yet, but once they if and when they did turn in building permit applications or septic applications, an approach permit would be required from, I believe, County Highway. I don't think there's a road district out there.
Okay, so that's, it goes through the county. I was just curious, I was kind of expecting the County Highway to make a, you know, to comment something about that, because I know sometimes, you know, that, I've seen that before.
Right.
And so, but you expect that to happen, so they work with the County Highway?
Yeah, upon approving the building permit, we require they turn in those
Okay.
Approach permits from either highway or road district.
Thank you.
Further questions on item eighteen? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of rezone nineteen dash twelve and comprehensive plan amendment CA nineteen dash twelve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item nineteen.
Hello again, Cassie Bosted. Item nineteen is a reconsideration of minor plat nineteen nineteen. This is a plat that this body had seen before and approved. It was actually approved by this body in early July of this year and approved by the Board of Commissioners on July sixteenth of this year. What the applicant is proposing to do is to create this lot over here, Lot One, of what was previously going to be Grover subdivision. So he received approval of the minor plat and on August second, he went to file the plat with the Register of Deeds, and at that time, the Register of Deeds was unable to accept the plat because Grover subdivision already exists. So basically, staff spoke with the State's Attorney's Office and came to the conclusion that rather than have him go through the entire plating process again to simply change the name of the subdivision, which is all that's required for this plat to go through, that we would just bring it back before this body and the Board of Commissioners for reconsideration. All they are proposing to do is change this to Lot One of Buzzmar subdivision rather than Grover subdivision. There's nothing about the configuration, the lot size, anything like that that's changing about this plat. So staff is requesting approval of the reconsideration of minor plat nineteen nineteen to create Lot One of Buzzmar subdivision with nine conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on item number nineteen? Okay. With that, staff is requesting approval of the reconsideration of minor plat nineteen nineteen to create Lot One of Buzzmar subdivision with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item twenty.
Cody Sag, environmental planner. Item twenty is construction permit nineteen eleven. It's to bring in fill-in grade for a future resident and garage. The applicant is Jeff and Marcia Spilker. This is owned low-density residential, it's about three acres. There is currently, there was a violation on the property and the, the construction permit's going to take care of that violation. It was for dirt work over ten thousand square feet without approval of a building permit or a construction permit. What ended up happening was, they came in for a building permit back in April, it was never approved, but they started the, the dirt work and everything for it and it took it over the ten thousand square feet, and since there's no approved building permit, it requires a construction permit. This was routed through the interdepartmental review and County Highway came back and said that it is not to impact the drainage culvert across US Highway three eighty-five. Staff can't find any evidence of that happening. There's no special flood hazard area. There is no evidence of sediment leaving the site. They actually, last time I was up there, they kind of got lucky and burmed around it with unintentionally burning it, so it actually is containing the sediment pretty well. So with the approval of the construction permit, the violation will be closed, and so staff is recommending that the planning director approve construction permit nineteen eleven with eleven conditions.
Okay. Are there any questions on item twenty? From the membership? Seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on item twenty for the construction permit? I have one. We don't need to approve the construction permit.
No, we don't have to approve it. What's the fine for this kind of thing? Is there some kind of fine?
Yep, they had to pay, it's double the construction permit, so instead of two hundred fifty, it's five hundred.
Do, do people do this? It seems like it happens rather often. I, I assume they do it out of ignorance, not, not willfully, but they're just unaware that you can't just go and start moving dirt on your property. Seems like it would be a natural, but it isn't.
Yeah. Excuse me, sorry. Commissioners, that's true, there is some ignorance out there, and that's why we like to have people come in and ask us first before they apply. Unfortunately, there are some contractors that just want to pay the two fifty right upfront and not wait for the construction permit and just work in violation, which is one of the reasons why we've sped up the process.
Oh, okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on item twenty? Seeing none, moving on, item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is construction permit nineteen twelve to install a gravelled access road to include common utility trench on the subject property. The applicant is Site Works. The property is zone limited ag agriculture district. This was routed through the department, there was no major concerns besides, as you can see here, there was construction, you guys heard earlier, construction permit nineteen oh two for the gravelled access road. This permits actually the extension to take it through the section line onto another subject property. They have submitted an application for road construction in the section line right away that's heard in front of the Board of Commissioners. However, we have not received their exhibit that comes with how they plan on constructing that road in the section line. The applicant is well aware, I've told them multiple times, that we cannot, that they cannot do any work in the section line until that is approved by the board, so they are aware of that. They do have plans to set up, to do waddles as their erosion and sediment control. They're also aware if those fail that they have to do something more like put insult fences, something like that. So staff is recommending that the planning director approve construction permit nineteen twelve with twelve conditions.
Questions on item twenty-one? Okay. Sir, did you want to speak on item twenty-one or only if there's questions?
Could you just clarify again?
Please. Please, please come up to the, to the podium and, and to answer your question, the planning director will, will, is in charge of approving and basically the construction permit, we don't vote on it.
My name is Lloyd Soul, I'm one of the members of the LLC that owns this property, and I, I just missed it. Are you recommending?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be recommending approval, the planning director approve construction permit nineteen twelve with twelve conditions.
And then, you know, again, I, I didn't have any discussion with Site Works and you're saying there's an exhibit that they needed to file, include with it that they haven't included, is that correct?
For the, for the section in the section line right away, yes, they need to submit an exhibit for how that road's going to be constructed in there and for it to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, because section lines can only be approved by the Board.
I, I know one, one of the reasons I'm here today is, I think we all realize with what the weather has been this year and, and delaying so much work, and we have an, an offer on this property that we want to keep moving forward with, that we are willing to move forward with that road, but, big picture, can Site Works, after they file the exhibit, is there a meeting then that has to take place with the planning commission then again before they could start on that road? Or, or when could Site Works start on that road if they get that exhibit filed?
It'd have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners to be approved for this stuff, for the section in the section line. I don't know when, I'd have to look at the deadline for it, because they've missed the deadline for the next Board of Commissioners meeting, so it would probably be end of September. I can discuss it with you more out.
Okay, sure, okay, okay. Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep. Further questions on item twenty-one? Okay. Moving on to item twenty-two, the county board report.
PJ County Director of Planning Department, item twenty-two, county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the August twelfth, two thousand and nineteen planning commission meeting.
Item twenty-three. Items from the public. Do you folks have anything? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Carol Hayes. I'm a retired psychotherapist for children, and as such, I'm deeply concerned about the health of western South Dakota families. I apologize, I'm not, not well-prepared for this meeting, but I would like to make comments that relate to the proposed mining ordinance, section three twenty-one, and obviously this would apply the comprehensive plan as well. I want to submit to your facilitator a document from the Forest Service and the, the US Government Census Bureau called Economic Contributions of Mining. One of the arguments that's often given for
Oh, so I can make copies for you if you'd like.
Oh, okay, thanks. One of the arguments that's often given for facilitating hard rock mining is its contribution to the economy. In fact, you'll see from this document, it currently, in Pennington County, mining only accounts for one percent of the economy. Agriculture and tourism are much, much higher on the list, and you'll see the figures in a moment. You could build five huge destructive hard rock mines in the county and you'd still only get to like two or three percent of the economy. Lawrence County, which has the largest functioning, only functioning and, and quite large gold mine in the Black Hills, Lawrence County, only three percent, again, you'll see this from, only three percent of that economy can be attributed to mining. And as we know, mining, large, large-scale mining is very, very destructive to water sources, no matter how conscientious the mining operator, they use vast amounts of water which cannot be reclaimed. So I'm not going to carry on at great length today, but I did want to comment, and I'll be here in the future with more detailed comments, but I noticed in the proposed ordinance three twenty-one, it talks about reclamation. In our minds, reclamation is, oh, you bury the tailings and then you plant grass on top, right? And, and the section in, in three twenty-one that talks about reclamation, without saying that explicitly, it, that basically what it refers to, they'll, they'll smooth it over and they'll plant grass. That is not the most important part of mining reclamation. There are parts of mining that cannot be reclaimed. One is acid mine drainage, and in the future, I will show you documents that prove that. Acid mine draining is a kind of a leaching process, so you can't build a dam around it or something like that. It rains and the arsenic and the acid leach come out, no matter how you try to surround the process. The other thing is most water from mining cannot be reclaimed, they're just, you can reclaim some of it, but a lot of it goes into tailings pond and just evaporates and, and what's left is a toxic sludge, that kind of thing. So when you talk about reclamation, understand that Rapid Creek, by many estimates, and our aqua, by implication out here, many of our aquifers are already, or parts of the aquifer are already overcommitted. Many experts from the school of mines will tell you that, that Rapid Creek is in danger. And of course, that comes right out of the aquifer that we all share, no matter what usage you have for water, it comes from the waters underneath us all. Okay, so you're pulling water out to do a mining process that you cannot get back for the most part. There is an osmosis process, but that gets a tiny, tiny little percentage. So I just want you all to thoughtfully and deeply consider any mining ordinance that, improvements to the mining ordinance that's being contemplated, and I can, myself and others can provide you with lots and lots of ideas about that. And my final word is, because I know I shouldn't just bore you forever here, my final word is, I would like you all, I've been to some of these meetings, and I see that you guys get, you know, you get buried in who can build an addition to their driveway, or who can put another shed, or, you know, things like that. And those are of course important concerns for citizens, but I'd like you to, to kind of flip the script and begin to think of yourselves as champions for the citizens, not just folks who do the very best you can to get equitable driveways and that kind of thing, okay? That is important, but if you flip the script, you could think of yourselves as champions for this generation and future generations, especially champions for the water. In doing so, you'd have to go up against some powerful, some powerful entities like D E N R, for instance, and, you know, we could go on forever. But if you begin to think of your role as champions for the people and for their resources, and of course, that is acknowledged in the mission statement of the, the Board of Commissioners, that protecting the environment is one of the aims of the Board of Commissioners. And so, think of yourselves, go home today, think of yourselves as champions, and think what a champion would do, remembering that even if we built five more hard rock mines in Pennington County, it would still just be a tiny percentage of what's important to our agriculture, and to our economy, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Isn't this issue beyond us now?
No, it's out for review right now and comments are being submitted to the county, is my understanding.
Okay, so it will come back to us for another vote?
Yeah, it hasn't come yet.
All right, thank you. I mean, because we have heard, you know, many, many of those very same issues previously, so I just didn't know. Thank you.
Items from staff.
There's two on the agenda, staff has three.
Okay.
First is an update on comprehensive plan process. Matrix has made all the updates to the comprehensive plan as, as requested by the planning commission. What we're waiting for now is just for the, the board, they were going through all of their budget stuff and then also, they were pretty busy in the month of September, so they're looking at, I was talking with Deb and Gary this morning, they're looking at the second meeting in October for the board to first, to have their very first meeting about the comprehensive plan. During that time, the public is going to be able to comment on the comprehensive plan once we get some copies and Matrix sends us the final PDF. That first meeting before the board will be similar to your meeting. Matrix Design Group, Rich will be here, Rick, sorry, will be here and present kind of what the planning commission changed. uh, Rick, sorry, will be here and present kind of what the planning commission changed, a quick overview about the comprehensive plan and then some guidance for them moving forward with their meetings. There has been some discussion that the board might, might have special meetings, um, separate from their regular meetings so they don't get intertwined and go till three or four in the afternoon, um, but that's still to be determined. So what we're, what we're projecting right now is second meeting in October for the board to first hear the comp plan. It's not done yet.
Do you have a date for that? October?
Um, I can look it up for you and get it before.
Okay, thank you.
Item two.
Item two, just a census update. Uh, so our office is the, are the liaisons for the twenty twenty census. We've been working with the Census Bureau for about two years now, just verifying all the addresses in the county and as you can imagine, there's plenty. Uh, we have pretty much finished the technical side of all the requirements that we have for the county. Uh, what's going on now is more of the, they're hiring volunteers to go out and be the census takers. But also, um, most recently, the board has, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, made a motion to support, um, efforts to market and advertise participation in the twenty twenty census.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's pretty much where we are on that.
Have they started going door to door?
I don't know if they have. We were actually visiting-
Kevin Rapid City.
Well, okay, because we were visited at our desk by a, a person wanting to verify the address of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, okay. Thank you. Um, the last item is before you, you have new zoning ordinances with a new update. The reason for that is because of the recent Supreme Court decision on, uh, three twenty. So what you have before you is similar to one that, uh, existed a couple of years ago. So section three twenty, the mining, uh, the sand and gravel mining ordinance is, uh, taken out and any other section that that affected when it was amended has also been changed back. So what you have before you is the most current and correct version. If you require a three-hole punch version also, please let me know after the meeting. We can get that for you. That's all I have, sir.
Chairman, is there an-
Go, go ahead.
Oh, excuse me, is there an effort, uh, or a thought process of kind of re- trying to tackle again three twenty?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Is there a schedule for that? I'm not sure about the schedule, sir. But I see somebody walking up front.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Uh, I am currently reviewing three twenty, uh, for purposes of addressing some, uh, appellate review issues that remain with three twenty. I think the sentiment is that now that we have the time, we're going to make sure that any missing pieces are filled in within the ordinance before it's presented for reapproval. Um, I do anticipate this possibly going back to the planning commission within the next month and then on to the board.
Very good.
Thank you.
Exciting news, Michelle.
Can't wait.
Brings us to, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, um, just to answer Commissioner Johnson's question, um, October fifteenth, I believe it was your question, Commissioner Johnson, is the second meeting in October for the board. Nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, item twenty-five, items from membership. Is there anything? Go ahead, Kathy.
Rich, I have one and, and I, you know, recently, it seems like I've been getting a lot of questions from people, um, out in the county about vacation home rentals and the rules and the concern that there's a lot, there are some that are renting their house through these websites like Airbnb that aren't complying with the rules. And then there's a confusion out there about, and I don't know anything about this really, but that the county rules and the city rules are different. And, and I just feel inadequate in terms of even talking to people. I refer to your office really, but, so I'm wondering if, and I hate to, I mean, I, I'm asking kind of lean on you, but if I could come sometime and maybe there's others here that would like to join and get a little tutorial on, on that, some of these questions that were, that I'm getting. And maybe so I'm feeling a little better informed and a little, you know, more adequate to respond.
Or, um, if the commission desires, we could do it as part of the meeting. That way everybody gets it at once. Because if any, if there's more than four of you in a room, then that's a problem.
Of course, yes, yes. Well, I don't really, I'll let it up to you.
Are you-
We could probably do it in a half hour with Q and A.
Yeah. Or do you just refer them to section three nineteen of the ordinance?
Well, yes, but that's just, and I, and I do read that and, and I, the one thing I missed when I was looking at is the day guess and now I see that, so. But that's one thing, but then there's all these questions about, well, you know, this Airbnb issue and, and what, what's going on? You know, why, how do, how can people get around this law or these ordinance by going this other route and-
They're not.
And the question about, um, well, can they do this in the city? You know, Rapid City or Keystone or different city, you know, boundaries and how does that do it? And the sales tax issue and, you know, these kind of issues that I just really don't know about, but I'd like to learn a little bit more. So I think it goes beyond just what's in our ordinance is, is my, the, the, some of the questions that I have. And, and maybe that's beyond what you really are, feel, feel like you want to address too. Maybe I need to go to some other sources.
No, I can address it. I, not today. I mean, I, I actually gave a presentation on exactly what you're talking about to this, at a state, at our state conference. And, um, VRBO or Verbo as they call it now, and Airbnb and HomeAway, they're creating issues for planning departments, counties and municipalities all over the country, um, all over the world, actually. There was some evidence over in other countries. But because they don't have any regard, nor should they, I think, for what the local rules are, they do state, and I rent my house through Verbo. And they do state that you should comply and, uh, with the local authority guidance.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I would continue, I would recommend that you continue to refer people to the planning department because assuming the budget is finalized and the FTE for the State's Attorney's Office is approved, uh, I will be becoming the planning and zoning attorney exclusively. And one of my very large projects will be to revamp our entire zoning ordinance. And so any existing problems that are being presented under our current ordinance, um, uh, knowledge of those problems would be very useful to me in, uh, amending, uh, the V H R provisions, especially in terms of enforcement.
Yeah.
Just to pick up on that, as you can, as you can imagine, once we have the direction of the comprehensive plan down from the board, it's going to direct a, a complete overhaul of our zoning ordinance. And so this year with the budget, the planning department, we gave, I gave up, um, pursuing a building inspector to help the State's Attorney's Office to secure, um, an FTE for us because I believe that having an attorney exclusively for us had a, had a bigger impact in the county than having a building inspector at this time.
Uh-huh, okay.
What about the question, and, and maybe you don't want to pursue this right now, but the sales tax? I've been told that some, some people say vacation home rentals, you don't have to pay sales tax if you limit it to so many days. I've heard a hundred and eighty days, I've heard fourteen days. I, you know, what's the rule on the sales tax?
I don't know the specific statute, but they call it the rally rule. That's not, of course, the official name. But if you rent your house for fourteen days or less in one calendar year, um, you're not required to get a sales tax license. You're not required to have your inspections and in the county, you're not required to have a conditional use permit.
I see, so it's fourteen, it's not a hundred and eighty?
Correct.
Okay.
Hundred and eighty usually comes out as, as a temporary definition, but not with V H Rs, it doesn't.
And that would fall under the department revenue rules and regulations?
Exactly, and that's, but I just was, I'd just like to become a little more knowledgeable in general on these things with the right information. Well, what's the deal on the cities? I mean, can you have a vacation home rental in Rapid City or in the town of Hill City? And you don't, and, and those rules are different than the county rules?
They're different. Um, uh, well, I know Rapid Cities is different, so with that, yes, you can rent in Rapid City. I'm not sure about Hill City and I'm not a hundred percent sure of what their regulations are.
So if, I mean, I guess I could read the Rapid City ordinance as if, if you could point me to them maybe. And so maybe I can just find out my, you know, kind of answer my own questions really, but they are-
I think that would be a good thing to do. I mean, a tutorial for all of us. Some of us won't be as ambitious as you, so we need some help. Uh, but I've always been curious about this because I had a friend who had somebody across the street from them. They were going to be gone for four or five months and they said, well, we're going to rent our house out on Airbnb and how often? Well, we've got X number of days. I mean, they had like three months, you know, committed. And I thought, geez, the neighbors might get upset about this. This, and, and I was curious too. What, what are the regulations in Rapid City? And I knew they had some ordinance, but, um, it was an Airbnb thing where, and there's an agent in town that takes care of all that. She comes in, you know, greets the people, does all this kind of stuff. So, um, they've taken care of all the details, which, except perhaps there's some illegal ones, I don't know.
Multiple agents in town that will do that. And what you're referring to is called, what we consider a long-term rental. We don't regulate those. We regulate night and weekly over fourteen days in a calendar year. So if people are renting month to month, they don't need anything from our office. They do want to check with the state, but they don't need anything from our office. And that was a decision from, um, a recommendation from the V H R committee to not pursue those. And it's from my understanding, counties never pursue those.
Have a conversation about it. Or knowledge never hurts.
That's right.
No, that's true.
Any other items from the membership?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
I wanted to bring up the construction permit topic on ten thousand square feet again, because I've just been thinking of a couple of things since that came up earlier. When somebody wants to disturb, say, nine thousand square feet, they don't need a permit.
That's correct.
And yet, what if they later on disturb another two thousand square feet? How do you distinguish between the first project and the second project?
So if it's not part of the first project?
Yeah.
Completely distinct?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of a hypothetical situation. Is this something that happens or a problem?
Yes, it is also one of the gray areas that people get around getting construction permits and we're perfectly fine with it. As long as they've come in compliance with the first project and then also the-
So you go by the project, so the first project would have to relate to something like building, but it could be something else? And how do you know, like?
Well, there's been one recently where they phased it. And it was phased over two and a half years.
Right, see, that's the kind of situation I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So it's just a gray area. There's probably no real way to say how you determine when to phase.
Sonny, I, I could speak to that from back in my consulting days. Um, the, really the limiting factor there in my mind has to do with the amount of, uh, area that you have disturbed versus vegetated. And so, um, in very large grading projects for subdivisions and those types of things, I mean, you're, you're always, you know, trying to chase the dirt that you've disturbed before you do that. And so really the trigger on the ten thousand square feet is risk. The, the larger area you have disturbed, the more sediment runoff you could get. So theoretically, if you desert, disturb nine thousand and you had over seventy percent vegetation on the first six thousand or something like that, you had four thousand, I guess you could do a little bit more legally, right? But, yeah, so seventy percent in my mind is more of a gray area. What does it look like to be seventy percent vegetated versus not seventy percent vegetated? But just my thoughts.
So vegetation is what you're going to look for if you're going to inspect the site.
Mostly, that project has to be complete.
Okay. Um, also, you, you mentioned that because of people just wanting to accept the violation, you're speeding up the process. What does that look like before and after as far as the timeline that people have to face?
So what you have right now is the current after. So with the administrative approval from the, from the director and, um, company, we don't have to go through the six weeks of waiting, or the applicants don't have to go through the six weeks of waiting to get on a pla- a, a planning commission meeting for, um, a hearing and public comment. So it's sped it up by about two weeks in most cases. Um, it really depends on when they're able to come in with a complete application and staff is able to take that in. And then these, the construction permits can run independently from, say, conditional use permits and plots they can get on as soon as possible. And then once it's here for public comment is required, then, uh, document is ready for me to sign when I go upstairs.
So you say that this process has been sped up by a couple of weeks?
Couple of weeks at a minimum.
Okay.
It's not overnight.
Yeah.
Because, because we have that stormwater one that requires public comment on it.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Further items from the membership? Good questions. Seeing none, brings us to item twenty-six, adjournment. Is there a motion?
So a move?
Second. Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.
Thank you.